Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonian Morse Pariah, Antae, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 31, Class 31. What did we learn in Class 30? We started learning about equality. That Moors must come into the movement of statehood and understand the power of the Constable Court, but they must maintain equality. They must maintain equal protections of the law. When we're dealing with the foreigners, we must not use our state rights and our Constable Courts for revenge. We must use it only to get from a status of inequality back to equality. That's called nature's law, mother's law, common law, jurisprudence. Alright, Moors? So let's continue with our same subject matter. Our subject matter has basically been about the jab. We've been learning how to now, how to use the power of the state to stop subject matter such as the jab. But what are we really talking about? We're talking about a difference of application. So anytime there's a difference of application as it relates to Article 24 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right? Bilateral treaty. We're talking about an application of difference. And in that application of difference, anytime two states have a dispute, what application of difference do they ultimately end up using? And that is called a treaty, alright? So treaties are the supreme law of land. So today, we'll keep talking about the treaty. Which treaty are we talking about today? The Act of Algiers of the year 1906, which is a Moroccan treaty. Keep in mind, Moors. There is the Moroccan Sultan who now summoned the Christian powers into Morocco to talk about order. So let's keep talking about reign of order while Moors use humility and understanding equality, alright? So let's continue learning more about state rights. As Moors start understanding international law, Moors are learning that they no longer want to be stateless. So let me say this for the record. If Moors do not have a state provincial government, they are still stateless Moors. Some Moors think that because they have a nationality and that Negro blacks and colors don't have a nationality, they think the Negro blacks and colors are the ones who are stateless. And the reality is, if you do not have state rights through your constitution, then Moors who do have a nationality card are still considered to be stateless Moors, right? We've learned about this through the ICJ, World Court, that said that if so, you are Moors subjects and Blackamores and what you call sovereign citizens. Proteges are all stateless Moors if in fact they don't have a constitution that represents their sovereign rights through the state, alright? Let's keep talking about that, okay? Okay, let's go ahead and get started. As we always open up, we must always maintain the mission and vision state meant to create the United States of Morocco again, alright? So let's continue to be redundant, Moors. We gotta be redundant. We must do what? Maintain discipline. Discipline determines our destination. And what is our destination, Moors? To create this desire. But without discipline, we will never ever create this desire. It will never be achieved. It will never come to fruition if Moors don't use discipline. What discipline am I talking about? Moors have to create what's called the Circle Seven, State of Facts. The facts about your state. State of facts and judicial notice. Let's be redundant, Moors. What does that look like? Exhibit A, Moors need a constitution. Moors constitution, okay? That talks about your latitude longitude, which is your permanent domicile, land, dominions, regency of your land, okay? Number three, Exhibit B, state seal of your Moors constitution. Number four, Exhibit C, your provincial state flag, alright? That represents your constitution and seal. Exhibit D, Empire Morocco flag, because that's the mother flag that is the E state flag, the E state, Moors. E state. That's why I say E state. Why do I say E state? Talking about the empire. You must understand something, Moors. The foreigners, i.e. the colonists, don't want Moors talking about the empire. Soon as you mention the word empire, that's just like spreading light on a vampire. So you must understand the word empire is the light towards the vampire. So Moors must understand the word empire, the E state. The estate. E state comes from the word empire. Comes from the word earth. Earth starts with an E. The E state, earth. What else does E start with? Eve, E V E, mother, motherland. So we must always aspire to understand the word about empire. If you read the treaties, everything's about the empire. You read France versus United States of America, 1952, through the ICJ, it talks about the empire. This is the most important word, Moors. I continue to underscore that. Exhibit D, Empire Morocco flag. Exhibit E, Allegiance and Oath. Keep in mind, Moors. This is the mortar. The mortar that brings all of these applications together and gives it its power because the Moors must consent to a Moroccan government. That's Article 15 of the Treaty of Madrid. Article 15 says, "The Moors must come back and consent to a Moroccan government," alright? So we must consent. That's our consent right there, Moors, alright? Then you got Exhibit F, Public Inauguration Video, okay, Moors? But the only way to get here to this public inauguration, that means that now you have a dejor state where you have votes, ballots, votes, cashier votes for your officers, three branches of government, alright? Through those three branches of government, then you set up your other department heads of that government. And then you have your public inauguration for the world to be a witness, alright? Noobra Ali said he gonna lead the Europeans here long enough to teach us government again. The Europeans always have public inaugurations, alright? Okay, Moors, let's continue. So so far, Moors, as we already know, we're on Step 3 right now. We're now slowly but surely going into Steps 4, when we started talking about what are some of the steps the Moors can use as a defense of using the power of the state, right? So we learned about the State of Facts Judicial Notice. You can go back to Class number 26 to learn about that. Started learning about the Inductive Relief Order. You go back to Class number 28 about that. Then we start learning about the Order, the Reign of Order through the contempt of court that the Moors issue when diplomacy has failed, okay, Moors? That gets us, we're now getting back to equality. Each step is getting back towards equality. We're reigning in the order, okay, Moors? So according to what I just went over, here's what we're looking at, Moors. Let's be redundant. So Constable Court of the State has issued the State of Facts Judicial Notice, which is mediation, which is your Circle Seven Exhibits, which is your discovery, discovery friendly applications. Number two, Inductive Relief Order, your arbitration before litigation, which once again, you're sending now your Circle Seven Exhibits, which is your discovery friendly applications. Remember, we replace, we replace this with this when we send a Circle Seven Exhibits, okay? Alright, number three, Contempt of Court Order, which we're talking about now, fines, lawsuit, litigation, right? We've been talking about that. Okay, Moors. So once we get to number three, Moors, now we're talking about contempt of court order, the fines, i.e. lawsuit, litigation. We're talking about the Act of Algiers, Article 101 and 102. We're talking about fines, penalties, and confiscations. That gives us our delegation authority orders to put fines, penalties, and confiscations on the foreigners, alright? Now that we're now slowly but surely getting into number four, we'll be talking about surety bond liens on property, which is the penalties, Moors. We'll be starting to go over the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 11 and 12. Act of Algiers, 1906, Article 60. And what we're gonna learn in the Act of Algiers, 1906, Article 60, we'll start talking about the Kadi, which is the D, Tax Commissioner or Assessor, whichever title you want to give your Kadi. We'll start talking about the notice of lien surety bonds, slowly but surely. We'll start talking about the lien levied against the warranty deed. We're learning about the power of the Kadi, okay? Alright. Now keep in mind, Moors. In video number 30, we start talking about equality. But that equality was really based in what's called commerce. The Sultans were always interested in the foreigners paying commerce taxes, i.e. revenue to Moroccans. So today, we'll keep talking about that today. Why is that important to understand? Because the Moors start using Constable Court as a contempt of court. Contempt of court is also what you call sanctions. Those sanctions are all about revenue. Those sanctions are about fines. Those sanctions are about fees. Then those sanctions are about confiscations, okay? So all this is about economic liberty on behalf of Moors, what you call equality and economic liberty. So we'll keep talking about that today, alright? So let's just get a quick refresher. This right here is the Act of Algiers, 1906, what you call the preamble, alright? So in the preamble, what did we learn? The preamble is inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. Let's stop right there. What's inspired by the interest attaching itself? Who's attaching itself? That was the Christian powers attaching itself to Morocco. They were reigning in order. Because everything at that time, at that time was dysfunctional. So the Christian powers, okay? Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. So the Christian powers were attaching themselves to the reign of order with the Sultan to create what? Reign of order, peace, and prosperity. What's prosperity? That's commerce. That's economic liberty. That's revenue. That's taxes. That's money. We'll talk about money today. Now, we all know that money is the gold and silver coins, right? But we also must talk about what they call their Federal Reserve notes, okay? Alright, so, inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order so the Christian powers, i.e. the United States of America and the United States, have attached itself to the reign of order. They've already agreed to it. How do I know? Listen. They've attached themselves to peace. They've attached themselves to prosperity in Morocco to help Moroccans and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms. Right now, Moors in the 21st century are doing what? Creating reforms. We're introducing reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty. Sovereignty, birthright, and the independence of His Majesty, the Sultan. What is independence? Remember what I said, there's no more Sultans. So it's independence of states. You must replace the word Sultan with states, okay? So sovereignty, birthright, independence of states, and the integrity of state domains, and the economic liberty of the state without any inequality. So the Christian powers cannot use any inequality to stop us from maintaining our prosperity, peace, and reign of order in Morocco. They've already attached themselves to the reign of order. It's already been resolved, have resolved. What does that mean? It's already well-settled principles. They've agreed to this, these principles. Have resolved, been resolved upon the invitation of His Sharifin Majesty. So how do we place this? Upon invitation of His Sharifin Majesty. This is what the Moors must understand, 21st century. Through our state provincial governments, what are we doing? We must send an invitation to the third states. So invitation of His Majesty, which is what? The Moors states. Who's the majesty? Who's the Sultan? Moroccan states. Our Moroccan states must send an invitation to the United States of America and the United States. And there are several states that franchisees. We must call together a conference, okay? So Moors must understand, when we put together our state provincial governments through Constable Court and the rest of our Minister of Foreign Affairs, et cetera, we must reign in the order by sending an invitation to the foreigners, okay? Now, part of the invitation sometimes is gonna be the fact that Constable Court is calling them into Constable Court because you're dealing with an application of difference. You're dealing with an opportunity for an injunctive relief, relief order. You're calling them into court. That's an invitation. And then you have your contempt of court orders, okay? But the invitation is the State of Facts Judicial Notice, which calls them into Constable Court or to deal with Constable. That's an invitation. Injunctive relief, that's an invitation for them to now come and petition the Constable Court. Those invitations, those applications, friendly applications, then you get into litigation, which is contempt of court. Okay, Moors? Alright. So, "To call together a conference at Algiers for the purpose of arriving at an understanding..." Listen, Moors. "...to call together a conference at Algiers for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms, as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application and have appointed as their delegates plenty potentially to the following." So what's happening? "To call together a conference at Algiers..." So it's Algiers, but Algiers is located where? In Morocco. So it's a conference in Morocco for the purpose of arriving at an understanding. Moors are trying to arrive at an understanding with the colonists. But first, Moors have to arrive an understanding with themselves to form dejor governments to create reforms. What is our reforms as Moors? We must create states, Moors states. We must claim the E state through our state provincial government. Remember, Moors. The state, okay, is a pass-through. The state is a corporate political status. That's all it is, Moors. The E state uses the state as a pass-through. The state can interface with all other nations on planet Earth. Because now they go by the word state, okay? Moors must understand, alright? So the E state is what Moors claim, is the mother flag. But we use the state to function through it to interface with other states according to United Nations Charter, okay? And the Vienna Convention of 1969. Alright, let's continue. Okay, Moors. We're still looking at the Act of Algiers, year 1906. This is Chapter 6, okay? Remember, in Class number 30, we went over Article 105. Article 105, remember, Moors, secures the preamble, okay? Where did we learn that from? If you go back and read France versus United States of America, year 1952, the judgment, the ICJ talks about this. The ICJ pointed this out, okay? But what is the title of Chapter 6? It's a declaration relative to public service and public works. So now, we're talking about the E state. We're talking about now, public works, public utilities, which is what the foreigners are using in our land. Everything they do is about public works, public utilities, okay? We'll underscore that later on, okay? But that's the title, okay? So as Moors remember, in Article 105, it says, "With a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty..." Let's start all over. Article 105. "With a view to assuring..." "With a view to assuring..." "With a view to assuring..." That's insurance policy. That's a guarantee. "...the application of the principle of economic liberty." So Moors are entitled to economic liberty. It's an assurance, right? Without any inequality. Can't be any inequality. "The signatory powers declare..." Who's the signatory powers? The United States of America and the United States. "...declare that none of the public services in the Sharifan Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests." What does that mean? That's right. So the foreigners cannot alienate Moors whatsoever. That must be equality. But what we're gonna learn is, who oversees public works? Who oversees public utilities? We're going to learn about that, okay? Alright, Moors. Now, this is Chapter 4, Act of Algiers, 1906, okay? Now, before we read Article 4, alright? What are we talking about right now? Right now, Moors. We're talking about the Act of Algiers, year 1906. We're getting into Chapter 4, alright? And we're gonna read Article 60, okay? So what are we learning right now? We're gonna now read the title of Chapter 4. And then we're gonna get into who enforces taxes and revenue, alright, Moors? Okay. Chapter 4. If I have a mother, go ahead and read the title of Chapter 4.
Chapter 4, "A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues."
Read it two more times, mother.
"A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues." Chapter 4, "A Declaration Concerning a Better Return of Taxes and the Creation of New Revenues."
Okay, Moors, then. This title right here should tell Moors everything they need to know about the fact that the Act of Algiers is all about commerce. Who called the Christian powers in for this discussion, this assembly? It was the Sultan of Morocco. Why does the Sultan of Morocco get to bring the Christian powers in? Because the Sultan of Morocco controls all the treaties. The Christian powers do not have any trade without Moroccan treaties. So now, Sultan of Morocco is now bringing in the Christian powers to get the record straight about commerce. So what we're about to read, Moors, is about commerce. It's about money, okay? How does this tie in to Constable Court, contempt of court? Well, how do you enforce contempt of court? How do you enforce your lawsuit? How do you enforce your lien on their warranty deed? That's what we're gonna learn about, slowly but surely, Moors, okay? But what gives us our delegation authority to understand how do we come after them for contempt of court? Well, we're talking what? Contempt of court is really talking about taxes and revenues. You know, when we was growing up, our parents say, "Now maybe come in that room and tax your behind," right? Taxes is sanctions. Taxes is levy on those who are in a position where they have to pay in order to stay. Taxes, liens, sanctions are levied on those who have to pay in order to stay. That must be understood, Moors. So what are we talking about? The Sultan of Morocco said, "Y'all wanna stay? Y'all gotta pay." And the Christian powers agree, okay? So let's start understanding the power of Chapter 4, which is about a declaration concerning a better return of taxes. Talking money. And the creation of new revenues. We're talking money. Remember, treaties are about commerce. We must understand that. The only reason why Sidi Bouhama allowed the 13 colonies to stay in Morocco, it was all about commerce, okay? Alright, now we're going down to Article 60. Okay. Keep in mind, Moors, while we're reading Article 60, we start talking about it. Okay. Right here. When we start talking about surety bond liens on properties, which is the penalties, right? Now, we're gonna get into the treaties, which is our delegation authority order. Moors must always understand, what is our delegation authority orders? Moors can't be out there just freestyling. We must quote treaty international law in order to maintain equality. Because anything we do outside of the treaties or outside of our own Moors constitution is now acting outside the law, which creates inequality. We cannot sustain inequality. So let's talk about equality of the law. So now, we're talking about how do we put surety bond liens on properties? Well, let's first find out what's our delegation of authority. First, how do we go after the money? Because the money, we're just talking taxes, revenues, sanctions, levy, liens, et cetera, okay? We're talking in Treaty of Madrid, 1880, and Act of Algiers. That's all we're talking about. And now, we're about to get into the Kadi. And just wanted Moors to remember that. Okay. If I can have mother go ahead and read Article 60, please.
Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifan Empire and His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance."
Okay, Moors. This is basically self-explanatory, but let's just go over it, right? Article 60 of the Act of Algiers, 1906, Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention..." So that's 1880 Treaty of Madrid, okay? Protections in Morocco. We talked about that, right? We're gonna go into that shortly. But let's first read Act of Algiers. We're gonna go back to the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, okay? "Foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifan Empire." This is the Sultan giving the Christian powers permission to have property, i.e. deeds, in Morocco. "And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance." What do Moors need to take away from this article? Let's go back and break it down. Moors need to understand, the Sultans gave the foreigners, i.e. the colonists, the United States of America, permission to have properties in Morocco. But that's only if they have a deed. Now, we all know the word deed means dead, dead paper, dead pledge. Why is it called a deed, dead pledge? It's because of Article 25 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Article 25 says that the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is only a 50-year term. Term means it has an expiration. So you must understand, all of the colonists' deeds that they have, they do have them lawfully. But their deeds renew every 50 years. If the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is not renewed, then their deeds become dead. Their deeds become dead because Article 25 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is a term for 50 years. And if the treaty is now abandoned, then their deeds are null and void. So you must understand, Moors. The Sultan gave them permission to have deeds. But you must understand the definition of deed. We'll get into that later on. It means dead paper. Why is it dead paper? Because it's only a warranty deed. You know how warranties only have 30 days, 90 days, one year, then they expire? But during that time, they're valid. A deed, you'll learn that the colonists named their deeds "warranty deed." We're talking about that. Why is it a warranty deed? What's the warrant? It's only warranted as long as the treaties are valid. That's number one. Number two, it's only warranted if the Kadi, we'll learn about the Kadi, validates those deeds before they're transferred to another foreigner. So the Kadi must give his stamp of approval on the deed before it can be transferred to another foreigner. So the Moors always have the ability to validate the deed before it's transferred. And if the Kadi does not validate the deed, that means that deed, if it's validated without the Kadi, that makes that deed null and void because now it has infringed on treaty rights. Because the treaty rights say that the Kadi shall validate that deed. We'll learn about that. Okay, Article 60. "In accordance with the right granted by Article 11 of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifan Empire." The Sharifan empire, empire, empire. "And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers..." Stop right there. And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrator and judicial officers, stop right there. Remember what I said Morse, there are no more sultans. Who replaces a Sultan? The states, more states, so let's read again. And the more states. The Moorish states. The Moorish state show issue. To his administrator and judicial officers, so the state has administrative and judicial officers. Who are gonna oversee these deeds, we'll learn about that. Judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary. For them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause, so what's the catch? Morse cannot deny the foreigners from having deeds unless we have what? Lawful cause. You'll learn later on if the lawful cause is, if they transferred that deed without the Qadi validating it. They don't have lawful cause to have that deed, you're gonna learn about that Morse. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death. Shall continue without hindrance, you see that? The Sultan is allowing them to maintain their deeds. It can't be hindered unless. Something lawful. Unless there's a lawful cause to impede the transfer of the deed. We'll go back and read this, let's continue. Okay, mother.
And the ports open to commerce and within a radius of ten kilometers around such ports. His Majesty the Sultan generally and without it being necessary henceforth. For foreign subjects to obtain a special permission for each purchase of property. Now grants the consent required by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention.
Okay. And the ports open to commerce and within a radius of ten kilometers around such ports. His Majesty the Sultan generally and without it being necessary henceforth. For foreign subjects to, to obtain a special permission for each purchase of property, now grants. The consent required by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention, we'll go back and read Article eleven. But basically, the bottom line is this. The Sultan has allowed them now to just basically have properties wherever they want in the Moroccan Empire. As long as they pay taxes and the Morse maintain the revenue, we'll learn about that, okay, let's continue. Okay, mother.
At Kazhar El Kibir, Arzila, Azmar. And eventually in other towns of the coast of the interior, interior. Interior, the, the general authorization stated above is likewise granted. To foreigners, but only for purchase purchasers within a radius of two kilometers around those towns.
Okay, so this right here is very specific, the Sultan was talking about some specific towns, okay, let's move on past that. Alright, let's get into some more germane information about how it relates to northwest of Mexico, continue mother.
Wherever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings. In compliance with regulations and usage.
Stop, so wherever foreigners may have acquired property. They will be permitted to erect buildings and compliance with regulations and usage. So as you see, the Sultan has allowed the colonists, the foreigners to build buildings, houses, infrastructure. Okay, based upon what? Regulations and usage, whose regulations and usage? The Moroccan government, you understand what I'm saying? You gotta understand Morse, why they had to remove the Morse from government? Because the Morse was controlling taxes and revenue. They only allowed the colonists to stay here, remember the colonists are ex-patriots of Great Britain. And the only reason why Sidi Mohammed allowed them to stay here, because Sidi saw an opportunity for commerce. He saw an opportunity for taxes and revenue. So the Sultan's over a period of decades got a little more greedier and greedier, say, well, let them colonists move westbound. Long as they pay taxes and revenue. Okay, you gotta see what's really going on here Morse, alright? But the regulations and usage is based upon Moroccan law, alright? Let's continue.
Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Qadi.
Qadi.
The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title and conformity. To the Moham- Mohamadin?
Mohammedan law.
Hamaden law.
Alright, stop right there, listen Morse, very important to understand. Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property. The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title and conformity. To the Mohammedan law, you see that Morse? So in this article, there's two loopholes that give Morse authority over these deeds. We're gonna go back over this article, I'm breaking it down, when we're back to the top, it'll, it'll make sense to you, alright? So right here, very important though Morse. Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property. Transferring property who? Another na- uh, foreigner, before they can transport, transfer that deed. The Qadi, the Qadi. The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title, what title? The deed. Deed. And conformity to Mohammedan law, so you know, especially Morse out there who have to have experience in what they call real estate. They all know that you have to go to what they call a title company for closing. So the title so-called company transfers the warranty deed to the next foreigner. But they never have a Qadi there validating that deed. So Morse must understand some basics right now, fundamentals. Ever since nineteen oh six. The United States of America and the United States has agreed. To allow the Qadi to validate the transfer of their deeds in order for it to be lawful. And all of that was for what? Taxes and revenues. For Moroccans. Because foreigners have to pay if they wanna stay. How does this relate to contempt of court? Contempt of court is going to put liens on their warranty deeds, we're gonna learn about that. We're gonna learn that the foreigners warranty deeds are null and void. If in fact, they cannot prove that they are the holder in due course. Of a validated application. That's signed off by a Qadi to allow the transfer of those deeds. If they're claiming to have a warranty deed. Is null and void since nineteen oh six if a Qadi did not validate it, we're gonna learn about that. Okay, let's continue with the paragraph. Okay, mother.
Before I splatter this word.
The Magzine, Magzine, yeah.
The Magzine shall designate in each city and district specified in this article that the Qadi. Who shall have charge of such verification.
Stop, so that's in that sentence, okay, alright Morse. The Magzine, who's the Magzine? We looked this word up before, Moroccan government. Sharifian authority, Magzine. That's all Moroccan authority, that's all Moorish authority, it's just government, Sultan means government. These are just government terms and semantics, okay? The Magzine shall designate in each city. And district specified in this article, the Qadi. Who shall have charge of such verification. So what's happening? The Magzine, which is the government, who's the government? The states. The three branches of government that the Morse put together. More specifically, when we start talking about the Qadi, the Qadi falls under what you call the executive branch. Because the Qadi dealing with taxes and revenue, which you're talking about the treasury, okay? Alright, let's go to the top and make sense of this now. This is very powerful Morse, Morse must really comprehend what's happening here. How do we enforce our contempt of court sanctions? We utilize constant court and the Qadi, the combination of two. To enforce constant court, contempt of court sanction, we'll learn about that. Article sixty, in accordance with the right granted by the Article eleven of the Madrid Convention. Foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire. And His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrator and judicial officers such. Instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death. Shall continue without hindrance. And the ports open to commerce and within a radius of ten kilometers around such ports, His Majesty the Sultan generally. And without it being necessary henceforth for foreign subjects to obtain a special permission. For each purchase of property, now grants, so it's now, now they're granting. Now grants the consent required by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention, so that just means. The Sultan is allowing them now just to have properties, okay, they can have deeds, okay? We're gonna skip over this paragraph. Whenever foreigners may have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings. And compliance with regulations and usage, okay? So I'll say it again, whenever foreigners, colonists. May have acquired property, they will be permitted to erect buildings. And compliance with regulations and uses, regulation uses of Moroccan's law. Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property. The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title and conformity. To the Mohammedan law. The Magzine, i.e. the Moorish state government, the Magzine shall designate in each city and district. Specified in this article, the Qadi who shall have charge of such verification, okay? So. Over here, it says. Before authorizing the execution of deeds for transferring property, the Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title. And conformity to the Mohammedan law, what's Mohammedan law? Let's look that up.
Wouldn't that be the Sharif?
Or more specifically, let's look up the definition of Qadi, that's what I meant to tell you, what's a Qadi? Believe it or not, people, Morse I should say. Qadi is in the Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. Now. This should be a I, my fourth edition sometimes, since this PDF it transfers letters. C A D I, Qadi. Is in the Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition. Listen to me Morse. Don't ever let the colonists fool you into believing they don't know what the hell Morse is talking about. They tell on themselves. But they know Morse. Either don't know how to read or those that can read won't. But the foreigners have put the word Qadi in the Black's Law Dictionary. That must be underscored to understand, they know the power of the Qadi. Well, look how they kind of put the definition in here, right? They say what? A Turkish civil magistrate. Don't worry about the word Turkish, because we all know what Turkish means, that's the Ottoman Empire, that's still a part of the Moroccan Empire, okay? So the Qadi is a Turkish civil magistrate, but what is a magistrate? Mother, you can read the word magistrate for me, please?
Magistrate, person clothed with power as a public civil officer, state X.
So that's case law.
Case law.
Okay, let's go down and read the rest.
A public officer belonging to the civil organization of the state. And invested with powers and functions which may be either judicial, legislative, or executive. But the term is commonly used in a narrower, a narrower sense designated in England. A person entrusted with the commission of the peace. And in America, one of the class of inferior judicial officers. Such as justices of the peace and police justices.
Alright, case laws, go jump down to a magistrate.
A magistrate is an officer having power to issue a warrant. For the arrest of a person charged with a public offense, case law.
Alright, continue mother.
The word magistrate, it does not necessarily imply an officer exercising any judicial functions. And might very well be held to embrace notaries and commissioners of deeds.
Alright, so as you can see that last sentence, right? As we see already, a magistrate is a commissioner of deeds. The magistrate is a commissioner of deeds, let's go to the top. Magistrate is a person clothed with the power as public civil officer. So your Qadi is your magistrate, but the Qadi is acting as a public official. The Qadi can be in three different branches based upon your state rights, what are those three different branches? We'll learn about that, okay? Here we go. A public officer belonging to the civil organization of the state. And invested with the powers and functions which may be either judicial, legislative, or executive, you see that Morse? So the Qadi could have, a Qadi could be a magistrate judge. But more specifically, the Qadi, since they deal with taxes and revenue. More specifically, will come under the Treasury Department of the executive branch, okay Morse? So I highly recommend the Qadi be a part of the executive branch because you're dealing with the treasury. Alright, you're dealing with taxes and revenue, as we learned in Article sixty. It talks about it being in chapter four, and chapter four is about what? Creating tax and revenue. For Morocco, alright? So. The Qadi is a person entrusted with the commission of the peace. How does the Qadi maintain peace? Because the Qadi is looking for equality. Making sure that the deeds have validity. Because the Qadi in order to maintain peace, the foreigners have an obligation to make sure that Qadi is maintaining equality. By validating their deeds, okay? But more importantly, at the bottom Morse. The word magistrate does not necessarily imply an officer exercising any judicial functions. And might very well be held to embrace notaries and commissioners of deeds, okay? So what should we understand about the Qadi so far? Listen Morse. We already know the Qazi oversees constant court, that's a very powerful judicial branch of the government. But the Qadi oversees taxes and revenue, that's similar to the IRS. Okay, so the Qadi, the Qazi is the judge and the Qadi is the deed tax assessor, or you can put commissioner. So if you were playing chess in which, po- politics is always about chess. It's strategic, it's counterintelligence, okay? So your Qazi and your Qadi are like two rooks on a chessboard. For those people play chess, you understand how powerful the rooks are, especially when you al- align them in the same rank in file. The same row, okay, they're very powerful when used together. So right here, I have the Qazi and the Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks. When strategically used in combination of each other. The Qazi's contempt sanctions will cause the Qadi to satisfy the validity of the title, i.e. the deed. And conformity to the Mohammedan law, that's what you call political counterintelligence. What are we talking about? See, what happens is this. See, what happens is this, when constable court issues a contempt of court sanctions, and the foreigners don't pay those sanctions in a timely manner, then the constable court now issues to the Qadi in order for a lien to be placed on the warranty deeds in order now to get those sanctions paid for. So now you use the Qadi, the Qadi now takes a look at the warranty deed of the foreigner. So what happens? When the Qadi now is putting a lien on the warranty deed, guess what else the Qadi finds out? That foreigner has a deed that was not transferred by a Qadi. So what's happening? So when I say the Qazi and Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks, what does that mean? What's serendipitous mean? Serendipitous, can you read that for me, mother?
Occurring are discovered by chance in a happy or beneficial way.
Okay, so what's happening? When the constable court, contempt of court sanctions are now ordered to the Qadi to give the Qadi permission to put a lien on the warranty deed of the foreigners. Not only are we gonna put a lien on the deed in order for those sanctions now to be levied for the payment of the sanctions, but we're also gonna find out that that deed was not transferred by a Qadi since nineteen oh six. So it becomes serendipitous, we get a two for one when we issue the contempt of court. We get a two for one because we put a lien on the deed and we find out they weren't following treaty. They weren't following obligations of ensuring the Qadi had validated those deeds before they transferred it to the next foreigner. So what's happening? So in the Act of Al-Dusar, it's nineteen oh six, chapter four, and Article six, okay? So chapter four is about what? Declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenue. That's what Moors is gonna do through constable court, we're gonna create new revenue because of the sanctions. Because we're reigning in order. The Qadi, now we're talking Article six, sixty, excuse me, Article sixty, the Qadi was your deed tax assessor, you can see, or you can say deed tax commissioner. What does the Qadi do? Maintains compliance with regulations and usage. We learned that from Article sixty, that in Morocco must maintain regulations and usage of Moroccan laws. The Qadi will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title in conformity to Mohammedan law, right? So what we're using now, Moors, is serendipitous, what's serendipitous? That the Qazi and the Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks when it's strategically used, strategically used in combination of each other. The Qazis contempt sanctions will cause the Qadi to satisfy the validity of the title, i.e. the deed, warranty deed, and conformity to the Mohammedan law, which is a political counterintelligence move. Listen to me, Moors. We already know they're gonna ignore our state of facts judicial notice. We already know they're going to ignore our injunction relief order. They set themselves up to get a contempt of court sanctions on them because they did not follow the supreme law of the land, which is the treaties. As soon as we do that, through the contempt of court, now we're putting a lien on their warranty deed, now we're bringing the Qadi, Article sixty, to validate that warranty deed. What's gonna happen when the Qadi finds out that that warranty deed was not transferred with permission or validity of the Qadi? Their warranty deed immediately becomes null and void because of a unlawful cause. It gives us a lawful cause, let's go back to Article sixty, okay? Sultan shall issue to his administrator and judicial officers, who is that? That's the Qadi. Such instructions may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Now, Moors have lawful cause to now check the validity of their liens. And once we find out that a Qadi did not validate those, those deeds before they were transferred to the next foreigner, those deeds now become null and void because they were not lawfully obtained with the permission of the Qadi or the permission of the usage, right? Or the permission and conformity to Mohammedan law on what they call the regulations and uses of Moroccan law. Moors gotta catch what's happening right now. Listen, Moors, we start off talking about in class twenty-six, the subject matter of the jab. Do you remember when about time I got to class twenty-eight, I said, now we're not talking about the jab no more? Can we say, no, no, no? You disobeyed a court order, now you're dealing with a contempt of court, now you gotta deal with the constable court. We're not talking jab no more, now we reverse it on, what do we just do? Instead of talking about the jab or the subject matter, now we're talking about the fact. Let's talk about that deed you got. Because the contempt of court gives the Moors the ability now under what's called cause and effect to now go check the validity of those deeds because we were putting sanctions on their deeds in the first place. So you must understand, Moors. We're no longer talking about the subject matter of the jab or the speeding ticket or the IRS no more. We're talking about now what? Their deeds. Moors must understand, their deeds, their warranty deeds. The reason why it's called warranty deed because it's got a warranty for only fifty years at a time. But during that fifty years, as long as they've maintained the treaties based upon peace and friendship, if they're not maintaining peace and friendship, and they're not maintaining equality, but yet are maintaining inequality, it gives us what you call lawful cause to create a lien, an encumbrance, a cloud on their warranty deed. What does that mean? They won't be able to transfer that deed to another foreigner once we put a lien on it. More specifically, Moors, to get to the point now, when we confiscate that property because we gotta satisfy the sanction of the constable court to get that silver coin or the cashier's check from the sale of that property, that property now immediately comes, becomes right back into a lodeo title. It never will have a deed again. Because the warranty deed was once already null and void since nineteen oh six, if in fact the Qadi hadn't given it validity. So Moors would slowly but surely cause the foreigners to capitulate and understand they need a Qadi to validate their deeds if they wanna transfer, A, and B, that if in fact they don't want the Qadi to validate their deeds, then their deeds gonna automatically be transferred into a lodeo title because the Moors will now be confiscating those properties and there will never be deeds again. You gotta understand the long game here, Moors, this is a chess game. Moors must be thinking, future moves, fifth dimensional chess, as Taj Sri Bay talks about, fifth dimensional chess. So since they came and tried to hinder Moors' state rights, that cause was gonna create an effect on them, which is now we're gonna come and validate their deeds through constable court, and the Qadi is gonna get involved. You understand something, Moors? The only thing the foreigners got to maintain their jurisdiction in Morocco is the Moors in their head capitulating and allowing them to keep it. Soon as Moors realize they need a state provincial government and stop claiming the, the, uh, constitution for the United States of America, they defense. When he stopped doing that and started studying international law, they're gonna quickly realize the power of the pen they always had. But they had to be de jour through a state provincial government. And if the Sultan of Morocco, who was so busy trying to get France out of his politics, he transferred his status from Sultan to King and created a modern state called Kingdom of Morocco, which is a state provincial government within the Moroccan Empire. Guess what? See, with the United States of America and the King of Morocco, think they did to Moors? They did something for Moors, I'll explain it. Since there is no more sultans, and a Sultan who's now claiming to be a king agreed in nineteen sixty-nine, that's about state rights. He effectively by his own decree destroyed the word Sultan and replaced it with state. And now states, rights, rule the world. But it's still about the empire, so Moors must create states in the empire of Morocco. And when we do that, now we create what's called the regulations and usage of those warranty deeds. So the United States of America did us a favor. We don't have a Sultan controlling the empire no more. We have states, Moors states, and all those states are effectively the Sultan. So every state we create is the Sultan, because Sultan's a title, no different than governor, no different than prime minister. You must understand that, Moors. State rights for us to maintain our regulations and usage to now appoint the Qadi to oversee cities and districts in Morocco to maintain taxes and revenue on behalf of Morocco. As I keep talking about this, this all makes sense to you, Moors. All right, so keep in mind, Moors, the Qazi judge and the Qadi, the deed tax assessor are like two rooks on a chessboard. We're, we're now in the same row, they're very powerful, all right? The Qazi and Qadi create serendipitous discovered checks when strategically used in combination of each other. The Qazis contempt sanctions will cause the Qadi to satisfy the validity of the title of the warranty deed and conformity to Mohammedan law. It's a political counterintelligence move. All right. We're talking contempt of court, the Qadi oversees what? Taxes and revenue. Keep in mind, when I say contempt of court, sanction, sanction is another word for taxes. What's our delegation order, uh, what's our delegation of authority orders to come after taxes and revenue? Here it is. This is what you call the judgment. France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two, this is the summary of the judgment. Remember, we went over this, we went over, uh, uh, sections six and seven. We must maintain, understand, what's our delegation authority? What rights does the United States of America have? What defense do they have? What rights do Moors have? What defense do we have? Let's understand it, we're talking jurisdiction. Number six, no treaty provides any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens, nor can such an immunity capitulatory in origin be justified by the effect of the most favored nation clause, since no other state enjoys it for the benefit of its nationals. Let's jump down here, section seven, last sentence. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. So the United States and the United States of America's citizens are not exempt from taxes. That includes their third states that they call, for example, Arizona is a citizen. What else is a citizen? IBM, as a corporation, is a citizen because they created the Fourteenth Amendment, and they also created act of, uh, the, um, they also created the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, then the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one officially turned their republic into a corporation, so everything that is a corporation, and those corporations are labeled as persons, i.e. citizens. All corporations are persons, i.e. citizens. So the citizens, i.e. their corporations, their states of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. So let's go back to this word, fiscal immunity. What is fiscal? All right, let's get into this, Moors. We get, we, we get, we're going deeper, Moors, we're going deeper. Remember, we're talking about contempt of court sanctions, all right? But we're using taxes as an understanding of how the contempt of court sanctions work. Okay, mother, you can read fisk?
Fisk, a treasury of a kingdom or state, a money chest, case law.
Uh huh.
Fiscal.
Hold up, just a moment, all right, thank you, mother. Okay, so fisk, a treasury of a kingdom or state, a money chest. So fisk is a money chest of the state. So the state of Arizona as example, or the United States has a treasury. We're talking money, they're a money chest. We're talking the revenue that they collect, the fisk. Now watch this. The fisk, fiscal, fiscal, fiscal. We're talking about what? The owls' money chest. You see it? The owl, the fisk, and the owl, compound word, owl. The foreigners, through what they call a faux fur, i.e. trustee status, are holding on to the Moors' estate. And they're controlling it through a state and through the Federal Reserve as a trust, as the money chest. The fisk, the money of the owl, who the owls are, Moors. Fiscal, okay? Which is the money, the treasury of the kingdom or state, a money chest of the owls. Fiscal, fiscal, okay? Let's read it, mother.
Fiscal.
Fiscal.
Fiscal. Of or pertaining to the public treasury are revenue. Of or pertaining to financial matters generally, case law. Belonging to the fisk are public treasury relating to accounts are the management of revenue. Of or pertaining to the public finances of a government.
Thank you, mother, all right. Simple, Moors. Fiscal, of or pertaining to the public treasury of revenue. Remember, Article four, excuse me, chapter four, Act of Al-Dusar, nineteen oh six, talks about what? Taxes and revenue that's payable to Morocco's government. Let's start all over, fiscal, of or pertaining to the public treasury of the revenue of or pertaining to financial matters generally, all right? So we're talking financial matters generally, why am I pointing this out? Generally. Listen, Moors. No treaty provides of any basis for the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity. So what's fiscal? What's fiscal? That is pertaining to financial matters generally. So the United States of America is not immune to financial matters generally. Your contempt of court sanctions is just a financial matter generally. It's a levy tax. It's just a financial matter generally, sanctions, we're talking money, okay? So who's the financial matters generally belong to? It belongs to what? Belonging to the fisk. What's the fisk? The treasury, but it's really the treasury of the Moors. Because they're liquidating our estates. Remember, we learned that when we watched The Wizard of Oz. Oz told Dorothy, oh, you liquidated her, huh? Very resourceful, isn't that what he told Dorothy? See, they're telling us messages, they're liquidating our estate. Liquidating our estate, that's why I call Wizard of Oz, what is Oz? Ounces, ounces, liquid ounces, liquid, liquidating. Wizard means what? Wise words, through their words, through their legislation, they are liquidating our estate, which is our treasury, our money. You gotta catch how they talk, Moors. Belonging to the fisk or public treasury relating to accounts or the management of revenue of or pertaining to the public finance of a government. So watch this, Moors. Let's use Arizona as an example. The state of Arizona has a revenue department. Their revenue department brings in all the taxation to that one department. Now, Moors come in and now we tell that state department, yours percentage of all those taxes you collect. Now Moors come in and now we tell that state department, yours percentage of all those taxes you collect. We're talking about that in the future, but I'm just letting Moors know where we'll eventually end up later down the road, Moors. But for right now, let's talk about the contempt of court sanctions. The sanctions are now protected because now we're talking about the Ka'di and the Kazee working together now to put a lien on a deed that we find out that that deed is null and void because a Ka'di never validated. And now we're finding out under the word fiscal immunity. Fiscal immunity, that the United States does not have fiscal immunity. What's fiscal? Just finance in general. That's sanctions. I'm trying to make sense of this for the Moors. Don't overthink it, Moors. Let's read the sentence. No treaty provides any basis that the claim of the United States to fiscal immunity for its citizens. So the citizens, who are the citizens, Moors? The states, the third states which are municipal corporations, their corporations are now citizens. They're persons, they're citizens. Who else are citizens? All their corporations. IBM is a corporation, but on the record is listed as person, i.e. citizen. So everything they have is now put into what they call a corporation status. Everything, including their so-called citizens. So those persons who think they're Negro, black, and color are also citizens, i.e. corporations through the Fourth Amendment. Everything is about citizens and all citizens of corporations. So the citizens, we can tax all citizens and citizens are buildings too. Because they're, all their buildings are held in LLC or INC, making it person. All their buildings are held in a warranty deed, including what they call their capital buildings. Their capital buildings also have warranty deeds. That must be understood, Moors. Even though they're claiming eminent domain. Under that eminent domain, they're saying eminent domain, that that land belongs now to the state. But the state is a corporation, that corporation is a person, i.e. citizen, we sue it, we lien it. We'll learn more about that, Moors. Okay? This last sentence, section, uh, uh, section number seven. Citizens of the United States are no more exempt from these taxes than from any others. Why am I underscoring this, Moors? As Moors use counsel court to their advantage. We have to understand that we already have a delegation of authority orders to tax citizens. And tax is just another word for sanctions that are levered against citizens. You must understand, Moors. We already have the delegation of power to do it. But we must move forward and do it. So therefore, I'm pointing out, what's the delegation authorities so Moors have the confidence and the means to be able to do it, because now you can point out these well-set up principles, okay? Okay, we were talking about the Ka'di. The Ka'di, we learned in definition of magistrate, right? Talking about Mohammedan law. Mohammedan law. Mother, if you can read that, please.
Mohammedan law, a system of native law prevailing among the Mohi-
Mohammedans.
Mohammedans in India and administered there by the British government.
Administered.
Administered there by the British government.
Okay, okay, Moors. So we learn in Article sixty. Article sixty, Act of Al-Dosseris talks about Mohammedan law, the conformity to Mohammedan law. What are they talking about? Mohammedan law, Black's Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition, Mohammedan law is in the Black's Law Dictionary, okay? Don't let the foreigners fool you. They don't know what the hell Moors are talking about. Mohammedan law, a system of native law prevailing among the Mohammedans in India and administered there by the British government. Now, Moors got to be able to see through what just happened. So let's put it back in sequential order. So the British government has annexed India, but India used to have the prevailing native law. See how I just read it backwards? I'll read it again. The British government has usurped and colonized India, but India used to have the prevailing Mohammedan native law. So let's read it forward. A system of native law prevailing among the Mohammedans. So the native law prevails. What is that? Common law, mother's law, nature's law, jurisprudence. In India. Why are they pointing out India? Because they named the Moors Indians, or in India. That's not their indigenous name. So you gotta understand, they're talking about how they have conquered India, i.e. the Indians, i.e. all lands that's been colonized that used to belong to the Moors, the Mohammedans. By who? The British, who the British, the colonists. We even learned when we looked up the definition of wizard and Merriam-Webster's dictionary says cheekly British. The wizard in Wizard of Oz was cheekly British. Pretending to be the government of that land, but he was a foreigner in that land. Okay, Moors. What is Muslim law? Let's read it, mother.
Muslim law, one of the two great systems of customary law which the English found in India. It regulated the life and relations of all Muslims and parts of it. Especially its penal provisions were applied to both Muslims and Hindus.
Okay, thank you, mother. Alright, Moors. So your Muslims, your Mo, say, what's up, Mo? They call them Moors, Mo. The Muslims, one of the two great systems of customary law. Common law. Customary laws, common law, which the English found in India. So who's the English? The British. They found law in India. What are they talking about? They talking about Moors land. They tell you all the time, their secrets that they learned from the Moors government. It regulated the life and relations of all Muslims. So what regulated Moors, Muslims? It was the two great systems of customs, which is common law, jurisprudence, nature's law, mother's law. One of the two great systems of the customary law which the English, British, found in India, India where? India's where? Everywhere they call the Indians is India. It's a generic word. Indians mean Moors. It regulated the life and relationship of all Moors and its parts of it. Especially its penal provisions. What's penal provision, Moors? That's judicial. That's creating ordinance, law. That's the law of governments. So our law of governments was based upon the customary uses, usages of what? Regulations and usage was based upon penal provisions, which was ordinance equality of law, mother's law, nature's law, jurisprudence. And were applied to both Muslims and Hindus. Well, who's the Hindus? Hindus are the same people that calling Indians. Indus, induz, Indian, India. But they don't pronounce the H. Industan, right? Sinde. Okay, so the H is silent. Hindu, this is how the British end up calling people Indians because they wasn't adding the H. Transliterization, okay? So who are they talking about? The Muslims and the Hindus are all the same people, same people. Moors, alright? But they're talking in code. You gotta catch it. So the Muslims are the Moors, Muslim law. So some people say, "Well, I've never heard the word Muslim." It's in the Black's Law Dictionary. So the barristers, lawyers, attorneys, so-called judges, they know what Muslim law is. But they try to maintain what's called willful ignorance. That's the truth. Alright. This is the right of protections in Morocco, the Treaty of Madrid, July third, eighteen eighty. In this treaty, the Act of Al-Dosseris, chapter four, Article sixty, refers to the Treaty of Madrid, Article eleven, alright? Let's go to it. Okay, Moors. While we reading this, Moors must study international law. We must follow the yellow brick road. The Act of Al-Dosseris nineteen oh six, Article sixty, is a byproduct to now give more detail to what the Treaty of eighteen eighty was talking about, protections Morocco. But the Sultan was also trying to protect his dominion, the land, to get his tax revenue. Because treaties are all about commerce, okay? Article eleven, mother.
Article eleven, the right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government and the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country.
Okay, so this is the first part of Article eleven. Now you're gonna learn why they have to go back in nineteen oh six to clarify a little bit more. What, what happened? Watch. The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government. What government? Moroccan government. And the title of such property, what title? Deed of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country. What country? Morocco. See, all their deeds must be validated by Moroccans, i.e. Moors. So in eighteen eighty, they weren't allowed to just have land without their permission first. They had to get consent to get it first. Then in nineteen oh six, the Sultan said, "You know what? Y'all go ahead and spread out, but you owe me my taxes." You're gonna learn later on that the Sultan has additional verbiage in the Act of Al-Dosseris nineteen oh six about those taxes. And if someone's found out paying those taxes, they have to pay double. We'll learn about that. Okay, let's continue with the reading.
Any question that may arise concerning this right shall be decided according to the same laws with the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulated in the treaties.
Alright, Moors. So listen, Moors. Any question that may arise concerning the right shall be decided according to the same laws. What laws? Moroccan laws. With the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulated in the treaties. Minister of Foreign Affairs is the Moroccan government. That's your Hagii, H A G, H A J I, excuse me, H A J I B. That's your Minister of Foreign Affairs, i.e. your Secretary of State, okay? So therefore, the foreigners have an issue about wanting to spread out in land at this time in eighteen eighty. They had to talk to the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Morocco, okay? Now that has been updated to now nineteen oh six, they're talking about the Ka'di. But the Ka'di still works side by side with the Minister of Foreign Affairs because the treaties are still the supreme law of land. Alright, so let's go back to the top. Moors gotta understand that the Sultan allowed the foreigners to stay in the land and spread out. Article eleven. The right to hold property is recognized in Morocco as belonging to all foreigners. The purchase of property must take place with the previous consent of the government and the title of such property shall be subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country. So in nineteen oh six, now we find out what is the law? The Ka'di is the law. Under the state provincial government. What's the Ka'di do? The Ka'di is the deed tax assessor. What's the Ka'di do? He ma- maintains compliance with regulations and usage. That's right here what they're talking about. Subject to the forms prescribed by the laws of the country, i.e. the states. Y'all remember now, they're talking country right here, but in nineteen sixty-nine, now they're talking states. What does the Ka'di do? The Ka'di will have to satisfy himself of the validity of the title and conformity to Mohammedan law. What's Mohammedan law? Muslim law in Morocco, alright? Any question that may arise concerning this right shall be decided according to the same laws. What laws? Moroccan laws, Moors laws, your state provincial government laws. With the privilege of appeal to the Minister of Foreign Affairs stipulating the treaty. So what's happening? If there's a problem the foreigners have with Moors and their government, their regulations and usage, now they must petition Moroccan law. The Minister of Foreign Affairs, i.e. the consul, C O N S U L. And if there's a real problem, application of difference, what's next? Counsel court. You see, the foreigners have no choice but to bring all of their disputes to Moors. But the foreigners have done a great job of dragging the Moors into their jurisdiction by labeling them aliens, denizens, then citizens of the United States of America and then ult- ultimately ma- making them citizens of, of the, um, eighteen sixty-eight Fourteenth Amendment. Persons still stealing their birthrights, calling them Negro, blacks, and colored. But see, even that wasn't good, Fourteenth Amendment. They knew they still had to create some legislation to ultimately steal the entire east state by creating the Naturalization Act to officially steal the birthright of nationality. And then you had the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, they changed the parties' names to United States, so they can get away from obligations in the United States of America. And they drug the Moors into the United States. United States, and someone called Negro, black, and colored, thus, that's not the names of the parties on the treaty. So therefore, what the United States of America has done by creating the United States, they've tried to undermine the treaties by creating new party names. But what are Moors during the twenty-first century? Now we get back in the statehood of Moors states and we're using the proper names of the parties. I, i.e. Morocco Empire, Moors states, and talking to the United States of America and their third state called United States and using the proper word called Ka'di to deal with their liens. Listen to me, Moors. Moors previously were putting liens on the foreigners' properties as individuals. We were out of order by doing that. Why do I say that? Because the treaty gave us permission on how to do it from an equality perspective. Delegation authorities said, the Ka'di. But who, where's the, how, who appoints the Ka'di? The state government, okay? So we gotta understand that, Moors. We gotta put things back in chronological order. The Ka'di has a lot of power if in fact he's de jour. Okay, Moors, read Article twelve as we start to wrap up, as we continue to stay in subject matter. Of Moors now coming back into understanding how to put liens on warranty deeds and then how to use the Ka'di. We'll keep talking about this. Article twelve, mother, thank you.
Article twelve, foreigners and protected persons who are the owners or tenants of cultivated land as well as brokers engaged in agriculture agriculture shall pay the agriculture tax. They shall send to their consul annually an exact statement of what they possess, delivering into his hands the amount of the tax. He who shall make a false statement shall be fined double the amount of the tax that he would regularly, regularlery, I cannot speak-
Regularly.
Have been obliged to pay for the property not declared- Not declared, in case of repeated offense, this fine shall be doubled. The nature, method, date, and apportionment of this tax shall form the subject of a special regulation between the representatives of the powers and the Minister of Foreign Affairs of His Sharifian Majesty.
Okay, so the Minister of Foreign Affairs of who? The Sharifian Majesty of the states. The Sharifian Majesty is nothing but the states. The Sultan is nothing but the states. The Maghdi is nothing but the states. Moorish states in the empire of Morocco. So what's happening, Moors? As we get into this status here in the future, the colonists owe us a lot of taxes. It's already well-stated here, and if they don't pay those taxes, they gotta pay double. See, what's happening is what they think they did to us, they did for us. What do I mean? They created their own tax commissioner departments of their so-called states. They're collecting the revenue. Guess what? They owe us a percentage of that. They're already doing the workforce, collecting it from their citizens. Now, Moors go directly to their Treasury Department, i.e. the Secretary of State of their foreign state. We'll get a percentage of those taxes in the future. But how does that relate back to the contempt of court? Okay. What we're starting to learn now, as I'm starting to let Moors see. First things first, the Sultan allowed the foreigners to have deeds. The Sultan allowed them to have properties in Morocco. But under what condition? That the Kaadi validates those deeds before they can transfer them. That this thing is all about taxes and revenue. And if there can be no inequality in Morocco. What does that mean? Let's go back to Article one oh five, as we start to close out. Okay. Listen, Moors. Article one oh five. With a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty without any inequality, the singatory powers declare that none of the public services in the Sharifian Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interest. What does all this mean? When we start to tax them with either contempt of court sanctions or we start now validate their warranty deeds and find out they're null and void? Well, guess what? In order to keep those deeds, they're gonna owe a whole lot of taxes. Or their deed's gonna have a lien on it, an encumbrance, a cloud that those liens won't be useful anymore. They'll automatically be transferred into a loadio title. So we must start understanding, as we start to put liens on their property, and I'll keep teaching Moors about that, but first we must build up the fundamentals first. We gotta build up the fundamentals first, okay? We're, we're gonna get there, Moors. I promise you, we're gonna get to this right here. I'm building up to this, Moors. Listen, Moors. We're building up to the surety bond lien on a property, but first we have to start studying these articles first. Delegation authority. Studying the Kaadi. What is the Kaadi? We'll keep talking about the Kaadi. Then we'll understand how to put the notice of lien, a surety bond on the warranty deed. So that way we can lien levy against the warranty deed. Later down the road, what do we learn? We're gonna learn ergo omnibus principles of international law. Meaning towards all or towards everyone, towards the foreigners who have warranty deeds. Which is state rights of the Moors, uh, under international law. How to now utilize the lien or warranty deeds levied by the Kaadi because now we got the foreigners in a status called trespass. Because if their deeds are not valid, they're trespassing. Trespassing land law. Now we're dealing with the confiscation, sale of property, satisfy the sanctions of the counsel court. When we start talking about putting that in what we call equality. First mediation, then litigation. Now we're seeking fines and penalties, and when they don't pay, then we're coming after confiscation. So as we keep building up, I gotta give the Moors an understanding. What are the reference point? How do you qualify your delegation authority orders not to tax them, i.e. with sanctions, alright? I end with that. Islam.